But the one thing that has really not changed at all through this process is that our response to tackling this emergency has been controlled and managed all the way through this. We're trying to do the very best to move our services around so that people can still be taken care of, but still trying to hold that all together. Again, you know, we get reports from the national level and from the state level as far as what they want us to do within this response. And then we're in constant contact with all of our first responders, the medical community, the hospitals, everybody's responding to how they can walk through this. So our whole goal with this thing was to try to balance out through that whole process. Again, with the guidance of every time, every time we hear something new on the federal level or state level, we have to react to that. You don't need to be able to read this, and that's why I wanted to make sure I preface this. This is the ongoing timeline, and we're going to be updating this, but every day when something happens from the national, the state, or even the local level, we're tracking that through this process so that we can go back and actually determine what is happening. So we've only been in this thing, I think we've completed our fourth week since the start of March 11th, when the governor declared the emergency order for the state. And so this is all, this is all what happened in the first week as far as what happened. Here's the second week. You can kind of see that it starts to tighten up a little bit because of the way the activities are coming through. The third week, of course, we have some here, and we will be adding a little bit more items to this. The list is not complete yet because I've got it in other people's hands, but you can see on March 26th, the Facebook post that's in blue there, "Local Couple Donates Letting Flowers to the Cemetery." So we want to kind of recognize some of those pieces as well, too, because they're substantial events of how we're working together as a community. And then, of course, week four with where that is at. But we want to kind of keep this timeline and this list for your sake and because starting here with the next round of standing committees is where your work begins in earnest as to how we're going to come through this emergency, how we're going to come through this pandemic, and how we're going to come out the other side. So staff will be there with you. I mean, we've been working on all this for this long, but we will, we will be helping provide the information to each one of those standing committees because there's a series of actions that we'll have to do. We have to look forward three months, six months in advance. I think the president had mentioned one time, we don't believe that this thing actually ends for at least 18 months when we go through. It'll have a significant difference in 12 months from now, but right now, we're right in the middle of all of what is happening within this process. Our current goals, just want to make sure you're aware of this, we made some determinations. Our goal was to keep all regular employees working and shift current expenses from the general fund into other sources. So anything that's coming out of the GRT, those are the services that will be hit dramatically when we start to see the numbers of what truly happens with the economy. You can't, you can't short businesses, you can't close businesses without an impact to the funding that we need in order to operate our services. So we are trying to move those things around. We are focusing on the essential services. I'll go through that. And again, our biggest thing, and you can tell in this room just as well, maintaining social distancing and assisting the public with the stay-at-home instructions, that is what we're good at, that is what we're focused on for the most part. Our contact with city services, as of March 30th, we did open all of our offices to a seven-to-seven schedule. That was for two different reasons. One was to spread out our people so they're not all congregated in the floor and try to get those numbers down and social distance within our organization. And two, just because, because the people, the public is not able to contact the city in the normal ways of coming in through the office and coming in and talking with anybody that they need, that increased the level of phone service and email service for everybody. So we have, all of our offices are equipped from seven to seven so we can respond quicker to those responses because they can no longer come in and talk to us. Emergency contacts remain at 24/7, and we have, all of our buildings are posted with the best way to contact us through the pandemic. And so, again, we've tried to do everything that we can to get to that level. I mentioned about the full-time employees and how we're going to manage the employees. We did send all temporary workers home because our goal was to reassign our full-time workers into essential services. We have, we had actually, between everybody that has chosen to take their, use their own paid leave to stay home, take care of business, some of them have chosen to stay home without pay, so they furloughed themselves. We have not gotten into any kind of layoffs or terminations, but we've went through all those different levels of moving our people around. We ended up reassigning in this last week, I believe, 24 people. And so everybody has been reassigned as of this week into some other service that is more essential than some of the services that rely upon public participation to make the service worthwhile. So we have, we've gotten that all together. We do send any employee home if they are exhibiting any signs. And the challenge we have, even with the Emergency Paid Leave Act and all this other stuff that is happening, you have to be in contact with somebody that has been infected in order to get some of these benefits. So we have a lot of, a lot of employees are concerned that they may have the, they're showing some of the conditions, or they're afraid that they will get the conditions. We are working with all of them, but if they're not exhibiting those signs, those five signs, I have three listed up here, then they are, they're available to work at this point in time. We do have individuals that if they have a loved one that has been being tested, most of our employees have chosen to stay home during that time, waiting for the, to see what the test results will be. And it looks like the state's getting a little quicker on their tests as far as the responses, so that's, that's a good thing. Here's our listing of what we consider essential services, and I'm going to preface with, I don't believe in essential and non-essential services. If the service wasn't valuable to the city, we would not be providing that service. So it really is about a lower to a higher priority as to what we need to take care of today as opposed to what we want to take care of tomorrow. And so have everything listed here, infrastructure, public safety, administration, communication, and transportation. You can see what all is happening on that. And again, you'll start to see with each one of these lists, we have asterisks that are showing what, that we're not operating the same way as we used to, but there are changes. So transit in this case, our transportation, our bus service is mainly doing paratransit. So anybody that has a medical condition or anybody who needs those emergency needs, they're available for that. We also provide based upon the emergency need, if they don't fit that paratransit, we are going out with our buses to help people get to the services that they need for that. We have had to turn down a few that just wanted to get from point A to point B, but if there's an emergency need for those services, we are taking care of that in transit. The partially essential and non, partially non-essential classifications. Now, these are the ones, and the reason I call it partially essential and partially non, is that the ones that are partially essential, we may move some of the personnel out of there because, again, our service to the public has changed. And so these are the ones that are, that are working with the public in different levels. And so when, when the governor determined what she considers as personal business and what's non-essential, again, you can see that construction is a big one, so all the permitting offices need to remain active and working. So that's where you see the partial essential. The partially non-essential are ones, are the ones that we need to maintain staff in to some level, but the whole nature of what that business is has changed. I love using the zoo as a really good example. If we quit feeding the animals, we will not have animals for a zoo, right? And, and so when you look at that, the golf course is a good one to talk about, that we have these very expensive greens at each one of those holes, 18 of them, these green areas. If we allow that grass to just go fallow and go, just go wild, we will lose all the expense that we put into the greens. So we have to maintain to a certain level. It doesn't have to be maintained to playable level, but it has to be maintained to a level so that when we, when we pull back off of this thing. Rec and Aquatic Center, of course, is that we have a pool over there, it needs chemicals in it to make sure that it, that it maintains our system. And so, so that's what the partially non-essential ones are. And some of them with the asterisks, they're the ones that remain open to phone and email. These are our non-essential services that, and this is what I call the lower priority ones. These are the ones that predominantly we are reassigning from. The Convention Center is up there because it is a service within our budget, but it is employees that we don't necessarily control, but we have a facility that we've converted from what it was intended to be for, for these type of city meetings so that we can stream and we can, we can talk with the public and keep our meetings going. So there's a, there's a, there's a shift with every one of these things. I will state, because I know it was announced, even if, even with these buildings that are called non-essential, we have employees in and out of those buildings constantly. We have, we have a museum that is worth 35 to 50 million dollars. We need to make sure that that asset is protected for the future when we get through this thing. So we have people that are going through these buildings at all times. And so that's our, that's our list of things. And I will say that between all four of those categories, every day we see businesses or we see the services shift a little bit as we move and as we, as we learn a little bit more about what we need to take care of, we are moving staff constantly between all of these different services. Our reassignment options, I only broke it down into two different categories, beautification and I call it city administration, but it may be helping in any one of those essential services for scanning, filing, shredding, payroll, data entry, and everything on that city administration side. The beautification side, of course, is that picking up all the health and safety stuff, that's what this is. It's all health and safety, and we're trying to reassign staff over in that area. The little statement up at the top, right there after the opportunities, we are trying to move things out of our tight budgets. So general fund, we're trying to move as many, as many resources and out of that fund into other funds where we have different cash, essentially a different revenue. The GRT revenue-driven services are going to be injured dramatically through this thing, and we need to prepare for that. So anything that we save today goes into next year's budget. And so that's the intent for that. Really quickly, just a picture of going into where our conversations are going. This is a picture of the general fund and the revenue sources associated with those 20 fund, those 20, about 24 different services in this fund. And as you can tell, the, I'll go through the categories very quickly because I, this is a thing that the Finance Committee and everybody will get very comfortable with very quickly. The carryover, of course, is that money coming in that we didn't spend last year that comes in as the starting cash for the next year's budget. The property tax, that's self-explanatory, that's the tax that comes off a property. GRT, that's the one I want to make sure you focus on once we get through explaining all these other funds. Franchise pilot, MVD, these are miscellaneous funds that come in from different sources. This also includes the transfers in from the enterprise for the indirect expenses for the, for the general fund. And of course, the self-generated numbers, that's any, any department out there that has a fee structure, a user fee that's tied to it. You can see that the executive legislature, the first line item, there's $471. We also allocate any type of the credit card rewards that gets allocated to those different funds where those cards are at. And so there are, there are different benefits in there. If we've done investments of different types of money, you'll see that, that's what that number is, that's why there's $471 of self-generated funds. So see what you guys are worth, right, for self-generating? All right. But with all this said, and so then it totals up to that number, what I want to draw your attention back to is the GRT number, the 25 million, that's 62% of all these numbers there. That is the number that we are the most worried about as we come through this thing. And I've heard from various sources today, and I'll cover it now, but a little bit later you'll see a little bit more on this thing, but we talked with Xcel Energy today, we've talked with municipal league, we've talked with a lot of different people, we've done three or four different analyses. We believe that for the next year, our GRT is going to decline by 15 to 25% as a whole. And the plus or minus in that, everybody, everybody that has done any type of analysis is in a plus or minus 10% range of that thing. So that is what's going to hit us for the next year. Now, with that said, when, and as we talk with the Finance Committee and everything as we put this budget together, what you will see is like a 40 to 50% reduction of GRT for July. And then over time, if this thing goes away, then, then the economy will start to pick up and, and build over the year. But bear with me, we're going to deal with this thing for the next year. That's, we have to build that way in order to be protective of being able to survive through the other things. There's different ways to get to this. Again, there's two options that the City Council will consider. One is to increase the amount of revenue in so we can look at transfers, we can look at our other sources of revenue, move money into this thing. And then there's also the side of reducing the expenses. And I would say that I would, I would recommend to everybody that we're going to use a combination of both just for the sake of trying to, trying to walk through this thing. It's up to you to help us determine exactly which way we're going to go with that. Next slide is, is just a visual slide in a different format, and everything that is in red on this slide is what's the GRT. So that is, that's that 25 million that comes across, and you can see it's the biggest line in every one of our general fund departments. This line here, I just used the, because everybody eats the revenue a little bit differently, this is the police department. And their, this is their budgeted numbers, everybody's budgeted numbers on here from where we believe they will be, and then a 20% reduction in GRT. For the police department, GRT will go from $8.5 million, $8.6 million, down to $6.9 million. That's a big, big drop for one department. They are a $13 million budget, but even at that, that's a lot of money in order to try to make up the difference for. And that's the reason I wanted to make sure I shared that slide with you. This is just in there for you to look at. These are different analysis for the GRT, what the impact will be for 2040, 60. This is what I was talking about for the regrowth of GRT. The economy will come back into a new normal, we just don't know what it'll be, but this slide shows a 40% drop in GRT, starting with July of 2020, and then it's like a 10% growth rate over the course of this next year for, for every month. And that may be a little more aggressive than what we will see, but I'm hoping that as we buy time to get closer to it, the crystal ball gets a little clearer as to what we think's going to happen. But all signs are pointing to a 15 to 20% reduction in GRT. This is the last slide for this, and this is just the stuff, this thing continues to move and evolve. I think everything that we've done with the city services and everything is, has been adequate and stable. There's not a lot more that we need to do unless we have to respond to any actions that the federal or the state governments do with us. We are watching the April 30th as far as helping with the expectations. April 30th is, right now, is the, the public health order for the governor of New Mexico, that is the date that has been set. Our worry today is that in her report is, is that we, she believes that we will not hit our, our max of impact or at the top of the bell curve or the number of people that need the use of the hospitals until the end of May. So expect, and don't be surprised if we see an extension from the April 30th, but I think she'll wait till we get a little closer. I don't think, I don't think we'll do another two-week stint. I think we'll aim for the, aim for the goal, aim for the mark, and it'll be another month that we're going to end up dealing with this. May 30th is our last chance in my mind of any savings that we can carry over into 2020. Any money that we save in June is going to be consequential within this system, and so May, between now and May is going to be the most savings for money to carry into the next budget. Anything that we change in June, it will not be as substantial, it will not be as beneficial to us as we move into the next year. But we are, we are setting the end of each month as kind of that relook at our responses and everything, and short of somebody causing a response, we're going to try to wait until that time to respond out. We will not be able to turn all our services on, but July 1st is when we're trying to plan for reopening essentially. We're hoping as far enough out that we can start planning. So the Convention Center, anything, any calls that we get, we're going to, we're going to sign them a weekend, we're going to sign them a day, any, any other services out there. We will not be able to flip all the switches on at one time for all of our services, and I think that was talked about at our last special session, it'll be kind of a dimmer switch. We're going to take, we're going to take a few of them, open them back up. Again, we're in the middle of the summer, Recreation Aquatic Center will be a big thing, getting that pool open, getting people, if they're allowed to come out, to be somewhere. And so that's what we're, what we're thinking will happen. We are expecting a reduction. Right now, we're building the budgets at a 12.7% overall reduction. Some departments will see a 10% reduction, some will see a 20. That, and then all of this will be, is subject to change as you are introduced within what your work needs to be in order to get there. Other than that, I'll take any questions or comments. I know I went a little longer than I intended, but I wanted to make sure I covered everything in great enough detail with where we're at, constantly moving, constantly changing, but that should give you a picture of today, short-term, long-term, as to what we're facing, so.
Okay. I have Counselor Oropesa and Counselor Perry on my list. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. You stated that the Phoenix flight is on hold. What about the Dallas one?
At this point in time, Phoenix, American Airlines has not informed us of any changes to the Dallas flights. American Airlines, I think it was April 1st, they, they stopped the Phoenix flight based upon the limited number of people that are now currently using flight as transportation. So there has been no conversation on the Dallas flights of any impact whatsoever. We still have all three of them going, they're still all available. The challenge, I think, comes with the self-quarantining requirement when you get back to New Mexico, flying in from out of state, you're going to, there's that self-quarantining that goes through that.
And if the, the Phoenix flight is not ongoing, are we still responsible for the payment?
We have not done the payment for over a year. The MRG, which is the payment that you're talking about, when we renegotiated the agreement after the end of the first two years, between American and Roswell, there was no need for the MRG. Our numbers were good enough that they were, they, there was no need for a minimum rate guarantee. So we have not been paying that for over a year. We've released all of our partners that helped contribute to that, and so, yeah, if it, if it does not come back, you know, those conversations will happen. Right now, American Airlines says this is a suspension of service. We intend to have it back as soon as we're able to put people back on the plane.
And the, the last question that I have is the, the test site that was set up at the Wobo, did the city have anything to do with it? Did the city pay any amount?
No, the city did not pay anything for that service. We did provide some auxiliary support and just a little bit of manpower, just to help direct traffic and everything. We felt it was our civic duty to do that, but the, the state and Department of Health covered that entire cost for that, for that testing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have Counselor Perry, and then Counselor Robach, and that exhausts my list. Counselor Perry, you have the floor.
Just really, just really one question as I was listening about the reduction of GRT and the budget reduction goal. I just wondered what the process will be for the funding for state of emergency and how much that's going to play in effect in this.
That, that conversation on the, on the state of emergency and what type of funding that we may have available for that, I can cover a few of the different pieces on this thing. Right now, we are tracking everything like we do with every emergency, we're tracking our expenses that are associated with it. And right now, though, we're in, I think it's a category B process where we're only able to get any reimbursement for very specific uses of our funds. So the ongoing operations of our services, there's no money for right now, but we are receiving money for the educational pieces we're putting out for any type of extra medical gear and everything, so we are getting those things. Along with that, what, what the state has done for us, and it's kind of twofold with that, they have released the, the requirement for carrying the 1/12 reserves. And so that has opened up that money, again, for the general fund, it's like $3.3 million that if we, if we go below that reserve, it's okay to do that, we'll just eventually have to replace it back to get back to that 1/12, and I don't know what that window looks like. We are looking right now at all of the, all the stimulus packages that have been put together by the feds and, and the state issued a few of them today as far as businesses and everything else. We are looking at those to see how they will help us come through this as well, too. I don't have a lot of definitive information on them. And then the other thing is, is that we do, we had a good, we got a good run with GRT this year, so we were up $3 to $4 million for this year. That will help carry us through as far as what our adjustments to our services will have to look like for the next few months in order to get this new balance found, so.
All right. Counselor Robach, that exhausts my list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say in this, in this whole situation, a thank you to a group of people we don't often thank, and that is actually bankers. There has been a ton of confusion and different programs coming out, and a lot of the programs are being facilitated, the federal government program, but it's the, it's our bankers that are doing that and working really, really hard. And it's not something that we normally say, but, but, you know, our small businesses especially very vulnerable, very, very sad what they're going through. And, you know, I, in the final analysis, we'll, you know, a couple of years from now, we'll look back and see what the, what happened in all of this, but certainly, we are, we're paying a huge price, and the most vulnerable people, the poor, as well as the small businesses who don't have, you know, the deep pockets, they don't have institutions, they don't have tax revenue, those are the, you know, we're going to lose some of those. And these are people who have put their lives into creating, creating a great retail, great experiences, restaurants, what may be for the community. And so I'm, it's really, you know, driving down Main Street every day, it breaks my heart to see a lot of these places closed, and I know some of them aren't going to open again. As we, as we tackle this, you know, I, and I've said this before, and I'll keep on this drum, is that we have to be proactive in saying, when we come out of this, how are we going to fire up our economy, not wait for it to come back, but how are we going to be proactively working to make sure the Roswell economy comes back and it comes back as strong as possible? So as we look through all these things, and even as we think about where to cut and why to cut budget, we need to be considering, we need to be considering the long-term ramifications of how we're spending money and where we slow down money and why we slow down money in certain places, because there might be some places that we don't want to slow down spending money because it will, it will be an investment that will pay dividends in the, in the short term.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, and just a couple of points on that, if I may, just while, address him while he's there. On a positive note, we have heard from one of our businesses that had applied through the stimulus package of the CARES Act, that they did get approval, and they were just waiting to sign the paperwork in order to get what they needed for that loan. So positive note for that one. And then on the other side, the mayor and I had actually been talking this week, we have been in conversation with the EDC about putting together a recovery task force for our businesses. And that'll be something that'll be forthcoming, and I'm hoping that we'll get members of the council on that conversation as well, too, because it's a multi-legged beast in order to bring back our businesses. But I think that's, that's all of the things that we are doing, so I appreciate what you're saying.
I have Counselor Oropesa again, and that exhausts my list. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I forgot to, to ask, I know we got an email concerning the porta-potties. Were you talking about all the porta-potties in, in the city to be removed?
Yes, they're, they're the, as the parks are closed, we've closed the parks, we don't really want anybody using the parks, we are not going to enforce those rules to that level. So all the porta-potties that we have that were normal occurrences to bring in and everything at the ballfields at the, at some of the other parks and everything, we went ahead and sent them back. And we will, we'll bring them back out once we start reopening that service.
Well, my concern is the homeless individuals. Obviously, with all the businesses being closed and so forth, we're going to have a problem if we don't provide a, a facility or a site for them to be able to, to use. if we don't provide a, a facility or a site for them to be able to, to use. So, I would hope that we would reconsider the decision of removing all the porta potties and bring some back.
Sure. And we will look in that. I know we talk on a regular basis about that, that, that population that we have with that. I believe that when, at, because we have good relationships with the Harvest Ministries, with all of our people that are doing that, we have not heard that this has had any negative impact on that population either. We will double-check and we will make sure to verify that, but I believe that they're all being taken care of to some level. You know, none of them really camp out in the parks, so it is really, they have their areas that they do go to in order to be taken care of. So, we'll, we'll look at that a little bit farther, counselor, and make sure that there is not an adverse effect with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Counselors, that exhausts my list. If there's no further questions from Mr. Neb, we'll move on with the agenda.
Yes, last statement is, is that if, hopefully, you're getting enough of the emails and knowing exactly, I'm copying you, anytime we include senior staff, so that you at least have an understanding, please contact us if you need more clarification or anything, and get ready because I need your help for starting this next round of standing committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neb. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, items number four through 14 were adopted when the consent agenda was adopted by the council as a whole, so we will now jump to item number 15. And the slight variation here is that I'll call on Mr. Holloman to explain the election of the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Election pro tem is a position that, as you know, fills in for the mayor and assists with the running of the meetings with, in the mayor's absence or in general circumstances. We've made the practice. This is an annual election. We ask that you have decided that you will do this once a year. This is governed by the Governing Body Rules of Order, Section 7P. You may self-nominate. There are no seconds required. Everything occurs with a roll-call vote, so first you take the nominations, then we go through a roll-call vote where each individual casts their vote for the particular person who's been, who they wish to nominate or elect. And then, the nominee with the majority of votes cast is elected, and I do want to point out that there is a distinction between the majority and the plurality. So, with, we have nine counselors present and participating. In order to be elected, you would need to receive five votes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Holloman, if there is in any way, shape, or form a tie, what is significant about this particular matter?
Yes, if there is a tie, Ms. Call has a deck of, unopened deck of cards to play high card, low card.
And my role is spectator.
To officiate the proceedings and to spectate, that's correct.
All right, all right. This point, counselors, I will open it up for anyone wishing to make a nomination, either themselves or other. I have Counselor-
Are you wanting to use the box?
Yeah, just go ahead and request to speak. Do a request to speak. All right. All right, I have Counselor Oropesa, Counselor Foster, and Counselor Best. Counselor Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to nominate Counselor Stubbs for, to continue being the mayor pro tem.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Foster.
I would like to nominate myself, the mayor pro tem.
Okay, I have Counselor Foster. Counselor Best.
I'd like to nominate myself.
All right. I have Counselors Stubbs, Foster, and Best. I'll just confirm, Counselor Stubbs, you are willing to serve in that position? Is that correct? Okay, just thought I'd better check before we start voting. Anyone else? Counselor Best? Oh, I'm sorry, you're still on the list. No, you're not. Anyone else wishing to be nominated or nominate someone else? All right. At this point, I will open it up. If any of the three of you, Counselor Stubbs, you were nominated first, Foster second, Best third, if you would like to make a statement to the governing body, I will make the floor available. Counselor Stubbs, your option.
Thank you. Are you going to give me three minutes?
I will give you, I will give you all the time in the world, but understand that you may, in the process of going along, alienate potential voters.
You think? Thank you.
Brevity is the soul of wit and getting votes.
And, well, okay. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to say to everybody what a privilege and an honor it's been for me to hold this position this past year. I appreciate the mayor working with me in this position so that, that I can represent him well when, when the opportunity arises. I think that you all are familiar with my leadership abilities. I'm not gonna go through all of the credentials that I have, but I don't think I would have been elected for any of these positions had I not shown some fairness and the ability to articulate what needs to be done and that I have a level head in making my decision. As you know, I write my own motions. I've been known to write and obviously offer changes to ordinances and resolutions, so I, I have that ability and I love it. Right now, I have given up most of my, well, actually, all I think of my volunteer positions because working with the city is a primary interest of mine, and I really want to be available and be able to devote time to the city of Roswell. I, I respect all of you and am, I hope that we can always come together. Like I say, I'm available. I would love to talk to more counselors, obviously, more of our citizenry as well. I am available to do that. I want to make just a short statement that the majority of the additional money that I've received this past year, as, as the mayor pro tem is gone to United Way through payroll deduction, I don't even see that money, and that that I do see, I typically am contributing to other nonprofits, so I just wanted to make that clear. I think I'm interested in doing this again because I've always believed that God has given me some abilities, and they're wasted if I don't use them, and I choose to use these abilities through the city of Roswell, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stubbs. Next up, Counselor Foster. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I've, in the past, this, the years I've spent on the council, I have appreciated all the work that we've done, and I just know my availability will be, I will have a lot more availability over the summer than I have, and I, I have seen in the past where some of us that have volunteered and been out of, out of the city more than they have been here, it's been kind of hard to, to serve. But I also do think that, that I, my ability to know, I'm not an expert on many things, but I do know a lot about, a lot of things. And, and I think over this next year, we're going to need a lot of leadership and understanding of what, what we're gonna be able to cut, and working with everybody, I think that it is apparent that we do need someone that can work with people, and I, I do respect all the counselors that we have up here and just think that we need to make sure that we continue that our normal procedure is to have, pass this on to other counselors, this position. And of the past, I only remember once that we've kept it twice in a row, and that was that the mayor's asking because someone didn't get to do the job that the mayor thought they were gonna be able to do. So, that saying, I respect you all, but I wish, ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Best.
Okay, a speech is not necessary. All of the counselors and staff know me and what I stand for. They know my passion for the city of Roswell. You cannot have a city without its people. My passion runs deep with the people. I have only missed one council meeting, two committee meetings in the eight years that I have served on this position. I'm completely committed to this position that I am seeking. I stand and work with the staff, also the mayor. I will always be available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. I'm only a phone call away and live about five blocks from City Hall. Counsel, I'm seeking your vote this evening. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. This will be a roll-call vote. When Ms. Call calls your name, I'll, I'm asking that you clearly state the name of the individual you wish to have as mayor pro tem. I have Jason Perry just jumped onto my list. Jason Perry, go ahead.
Just wanted to, to make a statement before we vote. I, I do believe that we are very fortunate to have a good council here. I'm looking forward to working some I have not worked with yet, but most on here I have worked with, a good bit through the years. I have been approached by, by all three and asked about this. I wanted to wait and hear what everyone had to say. I do believe that whatever decision this council makes, that we'll be in good hands and be able to move forward, but we're in a time of crisis. I do believe right now that we just do not know where we're going to be with the situations. There have been times in the past where the mayor pro tem doesn't have a whole lot to do, but there have been times where mayor pro tem has been a very, very crucial part also of what this government body, governing body would have to have in leadership. Though I believe that all three have the abilities and would do a wonderful job, I do have reservations, I think, right now with making changes, knowing through the crisis that we're going to be possibly looking at at this time, so, after hearing from the three and giving it much prayer at this time, I'm going to support Counselor Stubbs at this time.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Perry. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? All right. Once again, let me reiterate the voting procedure. Ms. Call will call your name. At that time, I'll ask that you clearly articulate the name of the individual you want to have as mayor pro tem. Stubbs, Foster, Best. Please be clear and unambiguous. If there is a tie, or if none of the three get a majority, meaning at least five votes, we will eliminate the lowest numbered vote gatherer and vote again. So, once again, clearly articulate the name of the individual you choose for mayor pro tem. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Robach.
Stubbs.
Counselor Foster.
Foster.
Counselor Stubbs.
Stubbs.
Counselor Best. Best. Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
Stubbs.
Counselor Kenard.
Best.
Counselor Moore.
Stubbs.
Counselor Foster has one vote. I'm sorry, Counselor Perry, I had already marked you.
Okay, Stubbs.
Thank you. Counselor Foster, you have one vote. Counselor Best, you have two. And Counselor Stubbs, you have six.
All right, thank you, counselors. Moving on to item number 16. Counselor Stubbs.
Mr. Mayor, at your recommendation, well, no, aren't we supposed, I don't think I need to do this yet. Am I supposed to do this right away? That's not what we talked about.
Guys, ladies and gentlemen, let me first explain. We have a number of items here where there are multiple candidates for positions. Each of these situations will be presented at one time. However, each position will be voted on individually. Let me articulate that again. In other words, we are considering first up the positions of, that are required under statute, as Mr. Holloman will explain. City clerk, city treasurer, police officer. However, we will not be voting for the, a packet. You will vote first for city clerk. After that vote, we will vote on city treasurer. After that, we will vote on police officer. So, that's the procedure here. Why don't we let Mr. Holloman explain, and then you can make the nomination? How about that? Okay, hang on, Ms. Call is coming back again. Thank you. And once again, I apologize, we're struggling to deal with some of our new technology here. We will not be using the voting box. These will be roll-call votes, and you will articulate whether you agree or disagree, and I'll explain that when we get to it. But let's let Mr. Holloman explain these appointive offices, and then we'll move on. Mr. Holloman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is a requirement of statute. You see the statute in front of you. This is NMSA 3115A. It requires at the organizational meeting of the governing body, that the governing body appoint, by mayor's recommendation and confirmation by the city council, the appointive offices. Those appointive offices are defined in statute. This is 312-4. The three listed there are the office of the clerk, office of the treasurer, and office of the police officer. This is a, a bit of a relic of a statute, one of the beginning ones that New Mexico had. This is also complicated by the fact that not only do we have a city manager, but that the personnel, the powers over individual personnel members that are employed by the city have been delegated to the city manager. However, in order to comply with the statute, it's been the practice of the city council to appoint these offices as to their statutory duties. Especially, the clerk is required to carry the seal and be the one to sign for the seal. The treasurer has some duties, the ones that jump first to mind are bonds. The treasurer needs to sign for bonds, and then we have a police officer who is given the ability to deputize others in order to confer arrest powers on, in order to, to enforce the laws within the city. So, even though that is a confusing situation, I mean, a little bit confusing given the nature of it, it does, it does serve a purpose in conferring the statutory powers on those individuals. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Counselor Stubbs, why don't we go ahead and start with the first one, and you'll go ahead and make the nomination?
You don't choose to make a recommendation?
For city clerk, my recommendation to the governing body is Sharon Call.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, at your recommendation, I would move to approve Sharon Call as the city clerk for the city of Roswell.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs. Why don't you hit your motions button, Counselor? And I have a second by Counselor Best to approve Sharon Call as the city clerk. Any debate or discussion on that? Lucky you. This will be a roll-call vote, a yes or I approves Sharon Call as the city clerk, a no or nay rejects her. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Kenard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I want to make note for the record that none of the counselors requested to explain their vote, which I found surprising. Next up, the recommendation for city treasurer is Mr. Juan Fuentes. Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the mayor's recommendation, I move to approve Mr. Juan Fuentes as the city of Roswell treasurer.
All right. I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs, and I'm gonna assume I have a second by Counselor, try it again, Best, to approve Counsel, Mr. Juan Fuentes as the city treasurer. Ms. Counselor Oropesa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of surprised that Monica Garcia was not suggested, since we have done her name for the past whatever number of years. I'm just wondering why, and this is with all due respect to Mr. Fuentes, why is it that we- it that we want to change that?
Okay, Mr. Neb, I warned you, I'd throw this in your lap.
Yeah, Counselor Oropesa, Mayor, City Counsel. Over the years with the City Treasurer position, it has been the City Manager for a little bit. Larry Fry actually was the City Treasurer for, for a little bit as well. For the, for the, for the last few years, we've had Monica Garcia. My concern, and, and it has nothing to do with Ms. Garcia's abilities or, or what she's doing, but let me just first say congratulations to Becky Hicks for taking the Fleet Manager position. She is leaving the Finance Office and going to the Fleet Manager position. Sylvia Caesar retired out of the Utility Billing Office. And so my concern for, for what I need to have Monica concentrate on is maintaining that office of the Finance Department, making sure that she is able to manage her staff accordingly. The City Treasurer does not get utilized enough, uh, much, other than, I think as Mr. Holloman has stated, is that a lot of it has to do with signing of the bonds. That is part of the reason why we have Mr. Fuentes on board as well, too, is that, that higher level type of work that we are going through. So it is not really reflective on Ms. Garcia. It is reflective that I need her to focus on other tasks for this next year, and I would, I would, I would act, I would hope that the Council would recognize that, that request for that reason, so.
Counselor, you still have the floor.
Well, you know, to, to me, that, that sounds a little suspicious, to be honest, because if Mrs. Garcia is doing the job that she was hired to do right now, and if you say that there's nothing, this is nothing against Mrs. Garcia, then why not appoint her? I, I mean, if, if she's able to do the, the, the job of that position that she was appointed to, why not continue?
My fear is the overloading of that position, because her duties have just exponentially increased as to what she has to watch. She's lost the majority of her senior staff within that department, and I would, I would ask that she focuses on making sure that that Finance Department, it is, I, I, I think that's the only explanation I have to, to share with that, is that she, her time will be spent. We kept her on as the Staff Liaison for the Finance Committee, so her job of helping manage at that higher level as well is going to be very important going forward. And so the idea was to spread, spread that around and try to get some of these duties into other people's hands. We have removed Budget out of Finance Department as well, too. We have moved Budget, again, as you noticed in my first report, we, we've, we, we non-essential these internal auditor position. Stephen Martinez has now taken over the responsibilities of helping put the budget together. That way Finance doesn't have to focus on putting the budget together, they can focus on that, that other work that they have to do with the fixed assets, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and all of that other work. And so the intent and the request that I had of, with the Mayor was to allow me to spread that around with that. I have nothing into this other than my recommendation to do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I think the point here raised, Counselor, is that I asked, Mr. Neb, who do you think should be Treasurer? And this was his recommendation, and the same explanation to me. Counselors, it's just been informed by Ms. Call that because of other technical issues, we're not going to use the, the voting box to make the motions. We'll still use it for requests to speak, but not for making the motions. So I will make an effort to articulate clearly for the record who makes a motion and who seconds the motion. So I will stay out of trouble with Ms. Call. Any further discussion on the City Treasurer position? Any questions or discussion? On that note, I will ask for a vo, uh, no, roll call vote. A yes or I approves Mr. Juan Fuentes as the City Treasurer, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
No.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
No.
Motion passes.
All right. I have, okay, is this a request to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, may I speak?
All right.
I would like to say thank you for, I, I didn't know Becky was going over there, but that is the best choice you could have made. You know, her history is with RIMCO and all of that, and this is just right up her alley.
We're excited.
I, I'm happy for her. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Third item up is Police Officer. Hmm. I know. I'm recommending Mr., uh, our Police Chief, Philip Smith. Once again, this is a kind of an interesting position, but it's required by statute. So Counselor Stubbs, to you.
Let me just make a remark before I make the motion. My understanding is the reason statute says Police Officer is very, there are quite a few smaller communities that don't have a police force of their own nor the, a Police Chief. So they appoint it probably a State Policeman or someone like that to be the Police Officer, so therefore they don't have Chiefs. So we're still recognizing that. But since we have a Police Chief, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve your recommendation for the Roswell Police Chief to continue to be Phil Smith.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Robach to approve the appointment of Philip Smith as the Roswell Police Officer, serving as Chief of Police. Any questions or comments on this nomination? If not, I'll ask for a roll call vote. A yes or I approves Philip Smith as the Police Officer slash Police Chief, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counsel, uh, Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item number seventeen, we'll mimic the same procedure, Counselors, and Counselor Stubbs. So I'll call on Ms. Call to explain the appointments, and then we'll take the appropriate action. Go ahead, Ms. Call.
Good evening, Mayor Counselors. This is the recommend, Mayor's Recommendation for the Airport Advisory Commission. Full disclosure, Amy Call, she, um, her husband and my husbands are first cousins. As you can see, the position is for Amy Call, Position Two, and Position Four for, for Mayor Kentai. Back in July of 2018, this commission, this committee, I'm sorry, Counsel voted to have one-year terms for Dane Marley and also for Dennis Kentai. So that would have put them at July 2019. Because our City Ordinance says that the terms run from April 1st to March 31st, those terms were extended, so this would be the year that we would, that you would vote for these two positions. Now, the reason Amy is on here is because Dane Marley resigned back in October, and that was when the Council at that time put her in that position for a partial term, so this will be her first full term. And I'll stand for any questions, if you have anything that you would like to ask. The positions are five members and two-year terms for each one.
Okay, any questions in general on this before we take further action? All right, Ms. Counselor Stubbs, my recommendation for, for Position Two is Ms. Amy Call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Mayor's Recommendation, I move to approve Amy Call for Position Two on the Airport Advisory Commission for a two-year term beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Kennard to approve the appointment of Amy Call to a two-year position on the Airport Advisory Committee. Any questions or comment on this nomination? If not, I'll ask for a roll call vote. You need to beat your feet over there.
Ms. Goddard, would you please call the roll? Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. On Position Four, Counselor Stubbs, my recommendation for Counselors Four is Dennis Kentai.
Hmm, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Mayor's Recommendation, I move to approve Dennis Kentai for Position Four on the Airport Advisory Commission for a two-year term beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Best for Dennis Kentai to serve as a two-year term on, in Position Four on the Airport Advisory Commission. Any discussion or debate on this nomination? If not, we'll call for a roll call vote. A yes or I approves, a no or nay rejects.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
No.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
No.
Passes six to three.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number seventeen, might as well just stay there, Ms. Call. And, uh, go ahead.
This is the next appointment. It's for the Roswell Museum and Art Center Board of Trustees. We have one position available right now, and that's for Position Number Three, Samantha Lycos, and she has served a partial term. This will be her first full term. There's eleven members on the board with two four-year terms. Any questions?
All right. Counselor Stubbs, my recommendation is Samanthia Lycos.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, at the Mayor's Recommendation, I move to approve Samantha Lycos for a four-year term on the Roswell Museum and Art Center Board beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Kennard to approve Ms. Lycos for the RMAC appointment. Any questions or comments regarding this nomination? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, item number nineteen. Ms. Call.
Okay, I know, it's my show tonight.
It is, it's the Call Show.
It is. So this is the Mayor's Recommendations for the ETZ Commission, and this would be for, well, there's three positions open. The way that this works is there's actually seven members on the board. We have three of them that are voted in by the Chaffetz County Commission, three of them that are voted in by this Council, and then the seventh member is voted in by the group of six. So at this time, we have Positions One, Two, and Three open by, for our city to vote on. That would be Matthew Bristol, Larry Conley, and Mona Kirk. These are one-year term positions, and so every year we go through and do this.
All right. For Position One, I will recommend Matthew Bristol. Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Mayor's Recommendation, I would move to approve Matthew Briscoe, Bristol to the ETZ Commission for a one-year term beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Robach to approve Matthew Bristol for Position One on the ETZ Board. I have two individuals wishing to speak on this. Counselor Stubbs and then Counselor Oropesa. Counselor Stubbs, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just, um, I don't know, I think I just want to make a statement. I, I thought that at some point, City Codes gave a length of time for different appointments. Maybe the ETZ is not one of them, but, and I know it's a little unusual to just have a one-year appointment as well, but, um, these folks have served for quite a while, but just clarification, if there is no limit or anything involved there, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, the ETZ is actually governed by a joint ordinance. There's an ordinance between the city and the county creating the ETZ, and the ETZ itself has another ordinance. So that's where our member, the membership requirements come from, is the ETZ ordinance, not the City Code.
Thank you, Counselor Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the same question. That's the same one that I was going to ask. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, a yes or I would approve Matthew Bristol, a no or nay rejects him.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
All right, thank you up. Uh, next one up, uh, right, we're still on this.
No, this is the next one.
No, we got to get, we had our two people.
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to rush you.
I noticed. For Position Two, Counselor Stubbs, my recommendation is Mr. Larry Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Mayor's Recommendation, I move to approve Larry Conley for a one-year term on the ETZ Commission beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Robach to approve the appointment of Larry Conley to Position Two on the ETZ. Any questions or comments regarding this nomination? All right, a yes or I approves Larry Conley, a no or nay rejects him. Please call the roll.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
All right, thank you very much. Next one up is Position Three. My recommendation for Position Three is Ms. Mona Kirk. Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Mayor's Recommendation, I move to approve Mona Kirk to the ETZ Commission for a one-year term beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs to approve Mona Kirk for a, for Position Three, and a second by Counselor Moore. All those in favor will be asked to say aye, any opposed will say nay. Please call the roll.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Kennard.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
All right. Next up is item number twenty. Ms. Call.
Okay, this is the recommendations from the Mayor to, for the Roswell Public Library Board of Trustees. We have two positions open. They're two four-year terms. Position One is Alyssa Rogers, and Alyssa, she has done her first term, this would be her second term, and then Position Two would be, the recommendation is Marcos Navas. Judy Armstrong recently had that position, and she has termed out. So Marcos had applied for it. And I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Counselor Stubbs, my recommendation for Position One is Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Mayor's Recommendation, I move to approve Alicia Rogers as a trustee for the Roswell Public Library, Library Board for a four-year term beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Best to approve Ms. Rogers for Position One. Any discussion or debate on this nomination? If not, we'll call for a roll call vote. A yes or I approves the nomination, a no or nay rejects it. Please call the roll.
Counselor Robuck?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Passes nine to zero.
Right, thank you. Next, position two, my recommendation is Mr. Marcos Nava for position two. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the mayor's recommendation, I move to approve Marcos Nava as a trustee for the Roswell Public Library Board to a four-year term beginning April 1st, 2020.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Kennard to approve the nomination of Marcos Nava for the Roswell Public Library, position two. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, a yes or aye is approves him, a no or nay rejects him? Please call the roll.
Counselor Robuck?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Passes nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Call. Next up is item number twenty-one. Counselor Oropesa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the Infrastructure Committee recommendation, I move for approval to advertise for a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 20-04 relating to industrial wastewater regulation updates.
I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa and a second by Counselor Kennard to authorize for advertisement for a future public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 20-04. Mr. Holloman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Proposed ordinance 20-04 has to do with the regulation of our industrial wastewater treatment and wastewater collection system. So, as a city, we manage our own wastewater system. This includes the collection, the treatment of the wastewater, and then subsequent disposal. In some circumstances, because of the kinds of chemicals that the user might desire to put into our system, they are regulated based on the contents of those, those chemicals or those particulates that they want to place into the system. As a treatment plant operator, we are subject to regulation at many different levels, and we're actually part of the chain of regulation. It starts with the EPA at the federal level, especially with the Clean Water Act. The New Mexico Environment Department is the next step in that, and they kind of work in conjunction to bring down the edicts from above. We then are required to adopt regulations in order to ensure, number one, the adequacy of the water that our system is collecting, that our system doesn't get overloaded, and then, once that we are discharging anything, that everything is, still meets the standards that are dictated to us from above. This particular change comes at the request from the EPA. They have a model ordinance that they have promulgated, that they ask all municipalities or local pretreatment plants or treatment plants wastewater system managers to adopt. This has been a long time coming. I think that the first issuance of that was about a decade ago, so we're still kind of playing catch-up on this. They, on, most recently, we've had a surprise inspection on February 27th, where EPA came and did an inspection of our facilities, and one of the first questions that they had was, are you updating your ordinance? So, we, luckily, this time, we were able to say, we are in the process right now. We're vetting it through committees and then on to city council. So, the way that we have handled this from the staff side, we've taken the EPA model ordinance, and it lays out everything from, you know, cover to cover. We've had to go through the process of going by, line by line, first to determine, number one, is this something that we're required to adopt? Because it's meant to be a national standard, it has some standards in there that are not applicable to users of our size. Second thing that we had to do was, once we determined that something is required, determine where it would fit in our code and whether or not our code actually already has that provision in there. I'll tell you, having spent a number of months looking at this, a lot of times, our code did already have the required language. It was just as a reference to another piece of legislation instead of spelling it out. And I've got an example that I'll bring up to you in just a moment. We then had, so, I was able to go through that over a number of months, and then I had assistance from James Norton, who was able to coordinate on some of the more technical aspects of it, you know, what, what are the standards that we need to have here? We then have an outside consultant who we then shipped all of our changes to and who reviewed it at that point. I do want to point out that there is one section in particular that we are not touching, and just so you know, because, I mean, it's the numbers section that is the most important to any of the actual users, is section 26-62. And if you look in your packet, I had it marked here, that starts on page 94, and I'll be referring to the clean copy in your packet, just to keep things clear. Those are the numbers, the actual levels that we test for before anything may come into our system. Those are established through a rigorous laboratory setting procedure, and so those in particular will not be changed at this time. The changes that we are asking to be made through the proposed ordinance are going to be very, I think you will see very limited practical changes, and, I think, Mr. Norton? Oh, okay. We do, so, if, and I think that we do have staff that can attest to that, to whether or not there are any major changes. The changes are not to the practical implication, implementation of this. It is more to how wordy, and I think you can see, reviewing the red line, how wordy the EPA wants our ordinance to be. If you'll look, let's see, on page 104 of the handout, just to give you an example, oh, I'm sorry, 104 of your packet. And I do, again, before I go on, I apologize that the redlining version didn't come through whenever it was uploaded to your packet, and we'll make sure that we get that corrected for the next round. The language that used to read on page 104 begins section, section 10 of the ordinance, section 26-73 of what would be the new Roswell code. It's called reporting requirements. Our code previously, or currently, says 40 CFR 403, general pretreatment regulations. It says, "All reports and requirements under 40 CFR 403 shall be required under this section." Now, what they've done in their model ordinance is asked us to replicate 40 CFR 403. So, instead of one paragraph, section 2673 now takes over one, two, three, four, five, let's see, four pages, as opposed to one paragraph. So, that's what a lot of the, so, whenever I say, I don't believe that we'll see a lot of practical change to the implementation, it's because that we've been asked through the model ordinance to adopt language that reflects, that takes out those references to other legislation. Two major things that did change. Number one is the reporting requirements, and this is something that, again, the reporting requirements that are in our existing ordinance made reference to the discretion of the director. Now, all of that is laid out in much more detail as to what you must have in order to apply for a permit, what you must report once you have gotten the permit, how you must inspect things in order to make sure that your permit continues with compliance. So, those are laid out. That's the first big change, is to explain everything that had been kind of left to discretion and implication or reference to other sections. The second major change is the compliance component, and this is the area that the EPA was specifically concerned about whenever they said, "We're concerned about you having your model ordinance in place," is that they didn't believe that we had enough admin, compliance measures, enforcement mechanisms built into our ordinance. So, now, we've got four separate measures that are spelled out. First, we have an administrative section where the director can impose a fine for a violation. This is one of the few, there are three or four, I can't remember, there's three or four sections where state statute allows a municipality to exceed $500 as its maximum penalty. This is one of them. Our maximum penalty can be $1,000. DUIs is another one. So, we can impose an administrative fine. That's something that can happen from the director. It gets appealed to the city manager. That would be as an enforcement mechanism, kind of at the lowest level to say, you've got to, I see you're violating this. If you don't quit it right now, I can slap a fine on you right now. Next, we have a civil enforcement mechanism. That would be where you actually file this in district court and have a judge tell you. The difference there is, it's a slower process, but then you would also be entitled to additional damages that you could prove. If somebody caused a violation, had too much of a particular chemical discharge, it affected our system, we had to clean out the system, we had to engage in other additional remediation measures that cost us money, we would be able to get that from a civil court judge. We also have a criminal provision, same thing where we can charge $1,000 per violation per day. This is a punishment mechanism to say, we think that you're intentionally doing these things wrong. You have the criminal intent that is required for conviction under criminal punishment, criminal law, so we're going to ask that a judge seek criminal penalties for you. The fourth thing is that a, there's, annually, there'll be a list of required publication of persons who have failed to comply, so there's also kind of a public shaming component to all of that. All of that all of that is for our wastewater system, covers four, end of it, four particular significant users that are defined and covered under this. We have been, I know in speaking with James, we've reached out with those businesses to know, so that they know what is coming with this, that they know what to expect, and that they know that this shouldn't change the day-to-day overall operations of how we, we handle things. I had put on here notes to throw it to James, but if you do have any other questions, we've got city staff available, especially for the technical side of this. It starts to tax my, my ability to read this. It makes me feel sympathy for people that have to talk to lawyers all the time. And with that, we would stand for any questions. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm getting yacked at from two different directions. Mr. Norton?
No, Mr. Menjola, but if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Okay. I have two counselors that signed up, Counselors Foster and Counselor Stubbs. We have nobody from the public sign up for this particular one.
Mr. Holloman, well, there's about three things I want to discuss, but one, in your opening statement, you said you, this went to committee, that you told the EPA this went to committees? What committees saw this?
To committee, the infrastructure committee.
You said committee. It was plural when you said it.
Then I misspoke. It was infrastructure committee.
Okay. And this is an ordinance, correct?
This, this would be an ordinance, that is correct.
So, why was it not taken through legal, too? Or also, I mean, I may be mistaken, but was, is Counselor Peterson on infrastructure or was on infrastructure at this time?
I believe he was, yes.
You were? I hate to ask. You were, oh, yeah. Well, my major problem is, I mean, reason is, because I know he holds a class four license, right? And he would have some expertise on this, but he also sits in legal, and that's, that's where it would also be very helpful. And I have some knowledge, because I could have held a class one license if I'd have tested. But, that's my problem, is this is an ordinance, and legal never knew about it until it hit. I mean, usually, I have read it, and I would have seen it prior. The other problem I have is, the first one we got had no red line on it, and it had no changes, so when I first read this and saw there, that there was no changes, really, barely minimal, I was okay with it going through just whatever committee, because it was, I thought it was just one of those that we were having to okay. And then when we saw all the changes, I realized, wait a second, that this is something that we needed to be aware of and going along with it. And so, at that point, and I know we're just doing this for advertisement, but this is an ordinance, and this lengthy explanation that we had to have here, basically, I think, is telling us, we haven't done this, the homework on it. It may have been done by staff and others, but I haven't done the homework, and I'm not prepared to, to send it to, so I'm going to be a no on, for advertisement, until we can actually get it in. Even though we do have a month to get it ready, I, I'm still a no.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Stubbs. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to basically say what Counselor Foster said, but we, we have looked at this, and I've requested that this be on the Finance Committee agenda, I'm sorry, not Finance, so sorry. The Legal Committee agenda on April 23rd, which will be ample time to look at it, and if there are any concerns, we can have that prepared for the May 14th, I believe, regular city council meeting. So, yes, I think it's important that it does come to legal, and it will also be in time not to interrupt the public hearing that's scheduled for the May meeting, so, thank you.
All right, I have Counselor Perry. Counselor Perry, you have the floor.
Just a few questions. Number one, and by the way, my questions have been answered, my main questions, just from roughly running through this from, from our legal counsel, so I do appreciate that. What kind of timeline do we have on this, and when they are expecting for this to be taken care of with the city?
And Mr. Menjola might be able to speak.
The EPA's been very patient with us. I think they, they'll give us that much time. We'll be okay.
Okay. Okay. I don't, and I spoke with Counselor Oropesa, since he was chair of the committee, and was asking him, and then was speaking with legal counsel. I think I understand the majority, but I did see some areas that may need to be considered with legal. So, I support that. If we have, if the concern, I guess what I'm trying to say from Counselor Foster is that this may need more time than just the month, then I think that I am, then I would be willing to go with that, to move forward, allow legal to look at it, to work with infrastructure on that. If it is thought that we can take care of this in this next month, and I'm okay as well with moving forward in advertisement and having time, so I just sort of like that clarification as to how, how you feel that would be? What is going to be most needed?
I, I mean, if, if the intention is to continue it through to May, I think that that would be appropriate. But, I think we also have the option, once we've got it to legal committee and they've had a better chance to review it, if they think that it needs more time, I'm sure that we could speak with EPA, and they would give us another month, given the length of time that we've spent on it up to this point, and as long as they know that we are actively working on it, and luckily, this time, we were able to provide them a draft of what we are working on. So, I would leave, I think that that's, council is safe taking either choice that they want to make on that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just one more statement, then I'll be done. Seeing as, and I don't put any fault on anyone, man, this is just, we're, we're dealing with trying to run government and trying to run meetings in a different way, and trying to hurry, and trying to get things done, and I am very confident that our legal department is overrun right now, just just trying to figure out how we're doing all of this. And I understand that the, not getting the red line in a timely manner may have kept many of the counselors from being, to really take a good look at it. So, for that reason, I think that maybe holding off the advertisement may would be in the best interest then.
All right, thank you, Counselor. I have no one else wishing to speak on this matter. If no one else wishes to discuss, I have Counselor Robach. Counselor Robach?
Thank you. This is for Joe. Joe, do you have any opinion on this, one way or the other?
No, I think all the options are on the floor, as far as you do. If you, if you do approve this by first reading, even after it goes through legal committee, what you're approving is that it will be on a future, a future public hearing. That doesn't mean that it has to be the May meeting for the next public hearing. It can be based upon all the conversation that ensues from this point forward with each one of the committees. If you hold it from going to advertisement, again, it takes us 30 days to advertise as well, too. So, what will happen is, if you hold it from advertisement, even if we have it ready for the May meeting, it'll be first reading for the May meeting, second reading for the June. So, we don't, I don't think, I think we're comfortable with any direction that you wish to go with this, so that you're comfortable with what we're asking you to do.
But if I heard you correctly, we can go ahead and pass to advertise?
You could pass to advertise and then not put it on to the May meeting, and it would go to the June anyway. That gives you too much to work on it in other committees as well.
Sure. Yeah, and I appreciate all the counselors' feedback. I also want to make sure that we don't stretch anything on. We have a lot of work to do, and so, we don't want to keep agendas, we want to keep things moving forward. So, so I'm inclined to go in support, going in and advertising for this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote. This is to authorize to advertise for a future public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 20-04. This is not approval of proposed ordinance 20-04. It's simply to authorize advertisement for a future public hearing and vote. A yes or aye authorizes that advertisement for a future public hearing and vote. A no or nay rejects it. Please call the roll.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
No.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Perry? Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to.
All right, thank you. I have a request here from the city manager to allow the individuals who have indicated today wish to speak as public participation prior to us going into the closed session, since we're not really sure exactly how long a closed session will take. We're still experimenting with this, Council, so I ask your indulgence in this slight deviation from the approved agenda. So, if it's, unless I hear an objection, I will proceed with the public comments. These individuals, hopefully, they're listening and can hear me. We have one individual? We just, just one? Okay, the other two dropped off? Okay. We have Mr. Larry Conley. I don't know if he remembers the rules. To please state his name and address, and he will have three minutes to speak. Mr. Conley, are you there? All right, I'm not hearing anything. Okay. Do we have Mr. Conley? Okay. We'll give it a couple minutes, all right? This is a work in progress, Council. I appreciate, and I know staff does, too, your willingness to accommodate this. We're attempting to try and do more of this in the future, where we can engage the public remotely, and ideally, at some future meetings, if we need to, we could do the counselors themselves. Counselor Moore, did you wish to address this matter?
Live stream in video or the just audio?
No, it's a video livestream. We are doing a video livestream, but then, Mr. Conley is calling in on the GoTo app, so he can participate through that mechanism. All right, and we're still seeing if he can come. No? The two other individuals were Deidra Ewing and Amila, last name unknown, who apparently have dropped off the, the system.
Mayor, we'll, we'll continue working out the bugs.
Okay.
We'll come back to the public participation.
Let's, I'd rather us try and work out the details here. So, if Mr. Conley is not able to come up, I'm going to move on, okay? All right. Mr. Conley, if you're out there, we're sorry, we haven't figured this out. At that note, I will go with item number 22. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council go into closed session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Chapter 10, 15, 1H7, and 1H8, to discuss attorney-client privilege pertaining to allegations of property damage, personal injury, injury to waterways and water rights, unlawful exercise of government authority, and employment issues, as well as to discuss the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property, specifically vacant land located near the Roswell Air Center by the public.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs to go into closed session, and a second by Counselor Best. Counselors, this is a roll call vote. Is there any debate or discussion on this motion? A yes or aye takes us into closed session. A no or nay keeps us in open session. And Ms. Call, does this need to be a unanimous vote? No, just a majority of the council? All right. All right, Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, counselors, I have 7:45. I'll give us 10 minutes to 7:55. We are now not going to meet in our normal location behind us. We're going to meet in Area D, which is at the far end, on the far east side of the convention center. So, you go out this door, turn left, go all the way to the end. We will be meeting in there. We will convene in 10 minutes. We are in recess.